Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Jordal.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Number one, we need a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Item number two, approval of the council minutes from February 2nd, 2015 and February 9th. With that, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number three, are there any citizens present tonight that wish to address the council on items that are not on today's agenda? No less, place, okay. Item three, there's no awards or recognitions. Item number five, we need a motion for deconsent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six, under public hearings, public hearing on street improvement on 16th Street Southwest, 19th Avenue to 22nd Avenue and 19th Avenue Southwest, 12th Street to 16th Street, project 2A15. Steven?
For these next three items, we held informational meetings last week on Wednesday for the public, and we presented these same PowerPoint presentations that you, that everyone is going to see here tonight. We just wanted to provide the residents an opportunity to come at a little, a more informal meeting where they could at, feel free to ask questions, just as they could here tonight as well. But at that meeting, we had, we did three different presentations, and there were about four people representing each area at each meeting. And then I see we do have some, some different people in the audience tonight that may be interested in these items as well. But for this first one, which is, as you described, in the Southgate area, street reconstruction project for 2015. The map on the, on the screen kind of shows 19th Avenue and 16th Street, how it goes around the perimeter of Southgate School area. Here are just some photos of the existing pavement. A lot of this, a lot of the homes out in this area were built in the mid-sixties, I believe, and I think that's about the same time that Southgate School was built, in the, in the early sixties, I believe, so it's very likely that the road went in at that time as well. So the roadway is about 50 years old, approximately. This, this project for surface improvements, we will remove the asphalt pavement, majority of the curb and gutter will stay in place. We will replace the roadway with new asphalt pavement and curb and gutter. We'll install drainage tile to improve subsurface drainage. We'll replace deficient sidewalk, and we'll provide for handicap accessible curb ramps at all the intersections to improve accessibility around the schools, and that is just something that we do on all of our street projects. The underground improvements will include some new storm sewer construction. We have a lot of drainage issues on 19th Avenue at 13th Street and 14th Street with some spillways. This winter, we've had Austin Utilities has had a water main break in that area, so we have a lot of ice dams and things that go across those, across those intersections. So we'll make some improvements there with storm sewer infrastructure, and we also have some sanitary sewer spot repairs that we will take care of during the project as well. In working with Austin Utilities, they plan at this point to replace the water main on 16th Street. Some project benefits, by doing a project like this, we're able to improve the ride and safety, we'll improve the drainage, the appearance, upgrade the underground utilities, and we're able to decrease maintenance costs. We're able to install those handicap ramps and improve the accessibility, as well as student accessibility in this area, and then fix any deficient sidewalk adjacent to the project as well, add an additional cost to the property owners. Assessment bills will, residents have been given an estimate at this point, but the final assessment bills will come out in August or September, and at that time, property owners have four different options. Option number one is they could pay the amount in full by October 30th of 2015 without interest. Option number two is they could pay at least 50 percent, and the remainder would go on their taxes. When it goes on their taxes, it's spread out over 15 years with interest, and the first time that it would show up on their taxes is in 2016. Or option number three is if they do nothing when they receive that bill, the entire amount would go on their taxes, again, spread out over 15 years with interest. And option number four is those, for, those that meet certain age and income guidelines could choose to have it deferred on their taxes until such, with interest until such time that the property is sold or changes hands. The council at previous meetings here this, this winter has set street assessment rates at $42.75 per front foot, and we also have set sidewalk rates, which account, which, when taking into account those sidewalk rates, are about $105 to $110 per panel for a four-inch sidewalk panel, and about $145 for a six-inch panel, those are poured a little bit thicker through your driveway. And if you do choose to put this on your taxes, it would be put in with an interest rate of about 4.75 percent. So that is my presentation for Southgate School project. Any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? If not, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience tonight that wishes to address the council on this project? If there is not, we need a resolution.
I think the, oh, I'm distracted.
Where?
Behind Steve.
Oh, yes, ma'am, come on up here and give us your name and where you live and your concerns.
Yes, I have a question. I live on 16th Street Southwest, and I want to know how the project is going to be done. There's so many of the people on that, in those townhouses, that have walkers, canes, wheelchairs.
They have what?
Walkers.
Walkers.
And canes, and, you know, and I was just wondering how that street was going to be done and how we were going to get in and out of our driveways.
Steven?
During the project, there likely will not be access to the driveways. When we do a street project, there will be inconvenience to the adjacent property owners. Project like this, we will, we are going to work with the church to try and provide a gravel access road from 20, 21st Avenue across to their parking lot. So for some of the residents in the townhomes there, utilizing their parking lot may be an option, and then walking to your townhome, or, or also working with the school district, maybe parking in the school district parking lots and walking across the road if those are, folks are able to do that. So those may be two options for people, but it is going to be an inconvenience, and people won't have access to their driveways with their vehicles during the construction. Timing of the project, we're looking at doing it in between school, so we'll be starting probably a couple weeks into June after school is out, and our goal is to be done, you know, a couple weeks into August before school gets started again.
All right, thank you.
So it'll be the majority of the summer?
Correct.
Anybody else? If there are no more questions, we need a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under our next public hearing, number seven is a public hearing on street improvements on 10th Street Northeast, 10th Avenue to 12th Avenue, 10th Avenue Northeast, 8th Street to 10th Street, and 12th Avenue Northeast, 8th Street to C, CPRR, project 7A09. Mr. Lang.
CPRR, Canadian Pacific Railroad.
Yep. The area you described is located there on the map in red. This is a section of South Crane Edition, and we're looking at doing one phase this year in 2015, and then the next phase in 2016, so this is kind of a two-year project. And again, the area highlighted in red is what we're looking at doing for 2015, including the roads that you described. Here are some photos of the existing pavement. In speaking with some residents at the informational meeting that have lived in this area for upwards of 60 years, they've indicated that many of these roads have not been replaced in that period of time, so they've gotten a lot of longevity out of the roads that they have there, but some things that we're looking to correct, you can see there aren't any curb and gutter in this area, there are some drainage issues that we'll be looking to correct with this project, as well as, as well as just the condition of the pavement has deteriorated to a point where it's beyond maintenance. So again, with this project, we will remove the existing pavement, we'll construct a new bitérminous surface with curb and gutter, and in this area, the width of the roadway is going to vary a little bit, it's, there's some narrow right of ways through here, so the roadway width will vary between 28 and 32 feet in width. We'll replace the end drives, the entrance walks, grass boulevards, and we'll replace any deficient sidewalk again. Again, we will not replace all of it, we just come in and replace those bad panels or those trip hazards. Underground utilities, we'll look at installing new storm sewer catch basins to improve that drainage, construct tile to improve the subsurface drainage, which helps the subgrade dry out in the spring, helps roadway hold up longer, and also sections of the sanitary sewer will either be lined to eliminate infiltration or replace, there are about three or four blocks of sanitary sewer that has a high groundwater infiltration in this area, so we'll look to either line or replace those, those sections. Austin Utilities is planning water main on this entire area, and they're also looking at putting some of the overhead power lines underground in the boulevards. So it may not eliminate all the overhead power lines, a lot of times there'll be Charter Communications or other utilities that are up on those lines, so they may not be able to eliminate all the poles, but the goal will be to eliminate as many as possible as part of the project. We have those same project benefits, again, the ride and safety, drainage, appearance, all those things are, are similar on this project. We have those same assessment options, as previously noted on the previous project, and assessment rates in this area, again, we have those, the set street rates. We also have a curb and gutter rate which would apply to this area. When the first time curb and gutter goes in, property owners are assessed for curb that very first time, but then they're not assessed after that. So with this area where it's going to go in for the first time, there is an additional $12.50 per lineal foot for curb and gutter. Again, the same sidewalk charges and the same interest rate if people choose to put that on their taxes.
Counsel, anything? If not, once again, this is a public hearing. If anybody's here to speak on this project, let us know, this is the time. Nobody, okay, then we need a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eight is a public hearing on street improvements on 3rd Avenue Northeast, North Main Street to 1st Street, project 1A15. Steven?
Yeah, the project you described is in conjunction with the upcoming SPAM museum project, where we will be restoring 3rd Avenue from the existing plaza to a roadway. The aerial photo that is shown on your screens, we're proposing, using the overhead projector, we're, we're proposing to reconstruct 3rd Avenue in this area. It would be a one-way road heading westerly, and it would line up with the existing 3rd Avenue segment that is on the west side of Main Street. We'll provide some connections to the existing parking lots, we'll provide a drop-off area for the new SPAM museum, and then it will narrow down to a one-way road where it will meet up at Main Street. In addition to this, there will also be, we'll incorporate some, some radiuses for larger turning traffic, and also we will review the radiuses as part of this project up at 4th Avenue and 1st Street to make sure that those meet the needs for larger buses and things like that that will be using this area. So we will remove the existing plaza seating area, sidewalk and lighting, we'll replace it with a concrete pavement roadway and curb and gutter. The width will provide, again, a one-way westbound roadway that will align with the westerly section of 3rd Avenue, as I stated before. Sidewalks will be constructed corresponding with the Main Street theme that we have already established downtown, will provide ADA accessibility, and street lights will be upgraded through this corridor as well. Underground utilities will be upgraded with storm sewer improvements. Drainage tile and the sanitary sewer, again, will either be replaced or lined to get rid of all of those old connections that are there from all the buildings that have been removed, and Austin Utilities plans new water main throughout this section. The benefits, we have reestablishing the roadway improves the traffic flow in the downtown area, improved appearance, upgrading the underground utilities and that handicap accessibility. The street assessment rates, this will, there will no, be no charge as part of this project, it'll be looked at as an overall downtown improvement, so there are no assessments as part of this project. That is all that I have.
Counsel? I assume that's going to be a stop sign on Main Street, not a, not a semaphore?
Correct, it'll just be a stop.
Okay. Counsel, anybody in the audience have anything? Public hearing? If not, we need a resolution for number eight.
So moved the resolution. Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. And our last public hearing tonight is a public hearing on street improvement on the alley west of North Main Street from 1st Avenue to 2nd Avenue, project 2C13.
Yes, again, on the screen, that area or that alley is located behind El Mariachi's, George's Pizza, Ride Your Bike, Hastings Shoe, it'd be the alley located directly behind them. We started a couple years ago looking at alleys in the downtown area for, for replacement and need for replacement, and this one jumped out as one needing some attention. So with this project, we'll remove the deficient concrete pavement, we'll replace it with eight-inch concrete pavement. The difficult thing about alleys is they're narrow, and it's difficult to match and make all the grades work along the backside of buildings where there's door openings and, and things like that. We want to make sure that we have smooth transitions out of those buildings, so that'll be a, an important part of the design. We'll also look at upgrading our storm sewer. A lot of roof drains come down into the storm sewer, and we'll look at making those necessary connections. And as part of the project, Austin Utilities also has plans for some electrical vault work. With this project, we'll be able to improve both the above-ground and below-ground drainage, improve the appearance in the underground utilities, and again, this, with this project, we've looked, we're looking at no assessments as part of this project, and it will be a ma, considered a maintenance project.
Counsel? Anybody in the audience have anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number 10 is a resolution setting a public hearing for March 16th, 2015, for street improvement project assessments. We need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 11 is a motion setting a public hearing for March 2nd, 2015, for the suspension of the downtown pawn shop license due to non-pavement of pawn fees. We need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 12 is a motion setting a public hearing for March 16th, 2015, for variance request from Jeffrey and David Hunn, 702 36th Street Southwest. We need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 13 is a resolution extending a farm rental lease for the Cook Farm with Kevin Finley. Steven?
Yeah, the next three items are all related to farm leases. The city of Austin owns some larger parcels of property, and to maximize their use until they are redeveloped sometime in the future, such as the Cook Farm, where we have looked at the last few years renting that out as farmland. And we have worked with Kevin Finley for the last three years on the lease at the Cook Farm. Due to, you know, commodity prices that have, I think everyone has recognized recently in the last couple of years, rates have gone down for those commodities, and therefore we have, worked with him to adjust our lease rate down as well. So we are, we're looking at a two-year lease for 2015 and 16 at a rate of $250 per acre, and with that, we would recommend extending this lease with Kevin Finley.
Counsel? If there are no questions or comments, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 14 is another resolution extending a farm rental lease for part of the Austin Municipal Airport with Morse Family Farms. Similar?
Very similar, yep, adjusted the rates. In this case, we're looking at a four-year agreement at $250 per acre.
Any questions? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 15 is a resolution extending a farm rental lease for part of the Austin Municipal Airport with Scott Family Farms. Similar?
The only thing to note here is the rates are a little bit different on these parcels because inside the airport fence, the, the crap land is not as productive, it's really broken up, so therefore the, the rates are lower to reflect that.
Okay. Any questions? We need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 16 is a resolution approving an ICM agreement with WCI Austin Landfill LLC, DBA, SKB Environmental. Mr. Ankerd, wherever you are, I saw you want to.
I'll take that one.
Steven, okay.
We currently have an agreement with SKB for the Lansing landfill, and that, we've had that for a couple of years now, and that's been working out very well to handle their leach ate. SKB recently purchased the Vitte demolition landfill, and now they're looking at doing some work on that site and have the same issues of need for getting rid of their leach ate, so we have developed a similar agreement with them, and I believe we're looking at a two-year agreement with SKB Environmental for the old Vitte landfill.
Counsel? We need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 17 is a resolution approving an engineering services contract with SEH Inc. for airport maintenance projects. Steven?
We built the Austin Municipal Airport in the mid-2000s, and now we're looking at doing some maintenance on the existing pavements that are out there. And with these proposed projects, we're estimating about $120,000 project for seal coating, the taxiway, fog seal, and then also some joint and fog seal repair of the apron. This agreement is with SEH to do all the design necessary for this project, and the project is funded 90 percent FAA grant, 5 percent state grant, and then 5 percent local.
Counsel, anything? Then we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second? Second by who?
Mr. King.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
18 is a resolution accepting donations to the city. We do this every other week. We need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Ankerd.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 19 is a motion reviewing a fence appeal from INS Group on behalf of the Austin Public Schools.
Yes, the, at the last planning commission, we had a fence appeal by I plus S group on behalf of, behalf of Austin area schools. Our current ordinance allows only a six-foot-high fence, they're asking for an eight-foot-high fence which would include, enclose and screen a new street-level HVAC unit for the Austin High School. The location would be north of the mechanical building at 301 3rd Street Northwest. The school district and its consultants looked at that location specifically because that's where their existing HVAC unit is. They'll have to be removing the underground portion of that unit and then installing the new unit above ground for purposes of access primarily, and then being able to remediate any problems with the unit should there be any failures. The units will be approximately 12-foot tall with the sound attenuation on the top, so that's why they're asking for an eight-foot-tall fence, they think that would be sufficient to secure and screen the location, which is in a residential area. This use is allowed because of the school existing in that area, it's necessary for the operation of the school, and the HVAC unit is their heating, ventilation, and air conditioning.
Okay, is this something that the planning commission?
Yes, the planning commission did make a recommendation to the council to approve unanimous approval.
Okay. Counsel? Any questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. 20 is a series of motions, looks like three of them. Oh, no. Granting the Planning and Zoning Department of Power to remove junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. A, 601 8th Street Northeast to E-Rath property. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B, 509 12th Street Northeast to Aguilar property. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? C, 900 1st Avenue Northwest to Padilla property.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? D, 902 1st Avenue Northwest, Bank of America property. So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? E, 506 7th Avenue Northwest, Milton property.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? F, 507 5th Street Northwest, the Katuski property.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, G, 103 21st Street Southwest, the Linkwitz property.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now to report and recommendations to the council. Judy, we'll start with you tonight.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Steve?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Yep. I have nothing, Your Honor.
Just a couple things. Paint the Town Pink, events are still continuing through this weekend in Brownsville and Adams, so check those out, there's a link on the city website. Just want to give Kim some extra recognition for being chosen to receive the Paint the Town Pink, Pink Heart Award, and it was presented at the Paint the Rank Pink game on Saturday night, and on behalf of Park and Rec and all the support and leadership for Paint the Town Pink, congratulations, Kim.
We're going to ask you to repeat your speech again. Do you want to do that?
No speech. No speech. And then there's an HRA meeting this Thursday, so we'll be getting an update on what's going on with HRA.
All right, thank you, Janet. Mike?
Nothing, Your Honor.
David?
Well, let's see, Pheasants and Habitat Forever banquet is this Saturday. This will be their 15th annual. They've also donated to the city of Austin in the past for Habitat projects, and the DCA membership dollars will show a 20 to 30 percent increase this year, and I think that's significant and shows that the community is backing our DCA programs.
Where and when is the banquet, Dave?
Saturday, 6:00 p.m. Holiday Inn.
Okay. Okay. Jeremy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Tom, do we have any reports?
Chief Press.
And Kim?
Thank you.
You look like you're bouncing around there. Go ahead first.
I'm ready.
Are you ready?
So I just want everyone to know that curling will start on March 9th. It's a Monday evening, so you can sign up at Park and Rec, and it'll be a beginner league, so don't be afraid to come down. We can take 48 people in one night, 24, there'll be two time slots at 6 and 8, so stop in the office and sign up. It'll be $70 a person. Thank you.
Kim, is that for all age groups?
16 and older.
16 and older.
Thank you.
Did you say $70 or $7? Sit there.
Okay.
I just want to remind the council and the city and the mayor that later this week, we will be transferring our dogs and cats from our current animal shelter to the new location, which is out by the Humane Society and Charter Communication. The project was completed basically last Friday with some minor details yesterday. Some of the council was able to take a tour of that facility before this meeting, so later this week or by the weekend for sure, we'll be moving the dogs and cats to our new location.
Okay. Okay, did you have anything?
No.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we need a motion to adjourn until Monday, March 2nd, 2015.
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Take a 10-minute break and leave the small conference room across. Take a 10-minute break and leave the small conference room across.